I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of Liberty and Justice for all.
If we could just take a moment, silence here, I'd like to recognize our first responders, both here and abroad, especially our department, who is mostly here today. Think about our, our police officers here in the township. Thank you everyone for coming. First thing I want to do is just remind everybody that we are recording this, so please keep any comments or talking to a minimum in there. Please silence your phones or watches, and if you do have anything to say, please make sure to sign in at the signing sheet, and we will give you an opportunity during the public comments. So on our agenda, the first thing was going to be approved previous minutes. I would like to actually move our new business number one, Sergeant Manuel Retirement Recognition, all the way up to the top. That way we can recognize Sherry for all her hard work and all the years of service here at the township. And then we can let our police officers go back to working and they're de-organized. So if I could have Chief Sherry. Yep. All right, first without transparency, sorry. So Sergeant Sherry Manuel, on behalf of Madonna Township Board of Trustees and Police Department, we want to recognize Sergeant Manuel for her dedicated service and commendable retirement on July fifth of twenty twenty five. Over the years, Sherry, Sergeant Manuel has exemplified leadership, courage, and unwavering commitment to our community and the police department. Her hard work and dedication has always, will always have a lasting impact. As she embarks on a new chapter of life, we celebrate all her achievements, but mostly, most importantly, the relationships that she has built throughout her career. Thank you, Sherry, for your service and sacrifice, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. Congratulations on your retirement, Sergeant Sherry Manuel, at the Township Police Department, July nineteen ninety-nine to July twenty twenty-five.
Just a few words. When I started this journey a short twenty-eight years ago, I couldn't have imagined what a filling career it would become. There have been many good days and challenging days. Fortunately for me, the good days are what I remember the most. I've had the opportunity to work with many people. I've learned from some, hopefully I've taught some, and I'm even fortunate enough to call some of them friends. Thank you to the community and the trustees for their support. I would like to thank all the chiefs, past and present, that have afforded me the opportunity to learn and grow along the way, sometimes even through mistakes. Thank you to my coworkers for the camaraderie and your support. Most importantly, thank you to my family and friends, especially my mother, for all the love and support and understanding along this amazing journey. I wish everyone well and hope that these, that their paths are as long and fruitful as mine has been. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. There we go. Okay. Yes, actually, thank you. All right, one, two, three. Anybody else? No? All right.
Back to business. So it's always good to recognize those who served the township for Willie and the long as Sherry has. I much appreciate the police department coming in here and supporting her. Chief, nice little flag. Let's just take her behind some reason. But onto normal stuff, approval of previous meeting minutes. So I'll do these one at a time. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees meeting minutes. This one is June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, trustee special meeting. In attendance were Johnson, Eastwood, and Christopher. So thank you for so much. All right, any comments or questions on this one? That was June eighteenth. Are you, are you rook though?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees minutes. It's July third, twenty twenty-three, there was a special trustees meeting. In attendance were Eastwood and Christopher. Second, any questions or comments on this one? Rooko, please.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye. I don't have last name on Eastwood. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees minutes. July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three, there was a special trustees meeting. In attendance were trustees Eastwood and Johnson. Second, any discussions on this one?
Just on the approval payroll, the resolution number, it didn't have a reported because it had just stopped.
Yeah, you have to tag a resolution.
I have it here if you want it, or you can just simply.
I can, I can write it right here.
It's resolution zero seven two four.
Okay, I can. Zero, seven, two, four.
Two, zero, two, three.
Two, zero, two, three.
One, zero, one.
One, zero, one. Zero, seven, two, four, two, zero, two, three, one, oh, one.
So we'll just retype that.
Uh, Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustee meeting minutes. This will be for August ninth, twenty twenty-three. There was a special trustees meeting. In attendance were trustees Eastwood and trustee Christopher.
Second.
All right, discussion on this one? You good? Okay, um, Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees meeting minutes. This is September sixth, twenty twenty-three. There was a special trustees meeting. In attendance were trustees Eastwood and Johnson. Second, any discussion on this one?
It was a good day, September sixth.
Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees meeting minutes. It is September twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. It was an emergency meeting. In attendance were Eastwood, Christopher, and Johnson. Any discussion on this one? All right, please, Rooko.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye. Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees meeting minutes. This will be for October fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. There was a special trustees meeting. In attendance were trustees Eastwood, Christopher, and Johnson. Second, any discussion on this one? Come on. All right, Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye. Lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees meeting minutes. It is October thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. There was a special trustees meeting. In attendance were Eastwood, Christopher, and Johnson. Second, any discussion on this one? All right, Rooko?
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Christopher.
Aye. I would like to make a motion to approve payroll dated zero seven zero three of twenty twenty-five. The total amount of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents of total revenue deductions according to liabilities at twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. I will incorporate these two pages as presented. Second, any discussion? Rooko, please.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Christopher. Mr. Eastwood.
Aye. Next on our agenda is talk about resolutions, about preparation of purchases of John Deere tractor. Did you talk about this a little bit?
Yeah. So the last meeting, we brought up the situation with our ditch mower. And Denny did reach out and get some pricing for a replacement. Our tractor is seventeen years old. The concern we have is trying to look forward is, you know, are we going to get ourselves into having dump big trucks and then the tractor? Today, the tractor is okay. Trucks are going to start being, um, the state offers obviously a discount on new equipment. Um, so that discount, you know, that rate changes, I believe, in about a month.
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth. Okay, so the July seventeenth date is why we brought these to the table, so that we can, we don't have to, uh, don't have to approve it, but if we're going to take advantage of it, we need to do it swiftly. This is a situation a little unique because normally you order it, it takes about six months to go through the process. A vendor, um, John Deere, those, those people, as I understand it, had one already ordered so they could put it together and still make a cut. There would be some availability to sell our tractor. Don't really know what that would bring, if we did dump deals or whatever the time. But, um, that's, that's really why we're bringing it up to talk about.
So one thing with the tractor still working that we have.
Yes.
My ideal goal would be to run it until we get the new one and then run it until it's sold. And if it doesn't sell, we keep running it until it doesn't work. And that will put less wear and tear on the new one and.
And a good last one.
And a last one.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
I don't think it's a bad idea, and I don't think we'll ever come so. I'd like to open it up to other townships as we could, local townships, you know, just for the Holland reasons and stuff like that, some of the locals might be able to do it here.
But I, I do like this idea of if it still runs and still functions, let's, we can take advantage of the low price on the unit. Because in the meantime, fiscal officer Ralph and I talked about the capital situation. Capital comes out of an interest-bearing account, you're losing money. And then I changed the conversation and said, what about if we lose the discount? Which are we going to do better with? And the discount was more than the interest, so that kind of made sense to, to go ahead with it that way, but we did look at it.
And having to, on, on board, one goes down or something like that too, it's amended, so.
Well, after the last meeting, when, when we opened our last meeting, it sounded like we weren't going to get until January, February. Then I was wondering, does this make any sense? This makes a lot more sense now than, than the other gift, so.
Yeah, probably realistically like September, no, then I'll figure out people that will receive it.
You know, fortunately, you and I talked about, I feel, you know, I had to feel that both way.
Then we got a lot of information together for us to look at, and I appreciate that. It wasn't just off-the-cuff conversation and, you know, hoping something happened. We got a lot of details, a lot of information. And again, talking to Ralph, it made sense that we all have to say okay to.
One other thing I'd like to add to it is, the old tractors, they used to mount them on two-wheel drive tractors. They will not mount them on two-wheel drive tractors on the stability and the weariness of, you know, because it gets twisted around so much. But they want forward, but a lot of the cost, a lot of the cost amount.
I think in order to do this, we have to do that before we do this, so.
All right, so then I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number zero seven, zero two, two zero, two five, dash, zero two, one, to approve a supplemental appropriation and purchase of John Deere tractor from the search department. Whereas the board trustee at township, that county of Ohio recognizes the need to provide necessary equipment for the continued operations and efficiency of the township search department, and whereas the board desires to make supplemental appropriations to facilitate the purchase of a John Deere six M one-one-five tractor with an Alamo boom mower to enhance roadside maintenance capabilities, now therefore be resolved with the board trustee at township, that county of Ohio, and the fiscal officer is hereby authorized to make the following supplemental appropriation. Transfer one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, eighty-seven cents from line number one thousand, dash, six hundred and ten, dash, seven hundred and thirty, dash, zero, 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 to improvement of sites to the line number one thousand, dash, one hundred and ten, dash, six hundred and forty, dash, one zero, zero, three, zero. Sharing equipment and furniture general fund. Board further approves purchase of one John Deere six M one-one-five tractor with an Alamo boom mower mount for a total of amounts of one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, eighty-seven cents. The vendor for this purchase shall be, um, the Deere and Company, two thousand, John Deere Run, uh, in Cary, North Carolina. So any more discussion? Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
I better make sure.
Mr. Eastwood, do you have any purchase orders or training requests?
Mr. Chairman, I have two relating to the resolution we just worked our way through. So I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase order requisition dated July third, twenty twenty-five. Apartment is admin. Vendor is Deere and Company. Purchase for a John Deere six M one-one-five tractor. The dollar amount is one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second. Rooko?
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase order requisition. Uh, dated July third, twenty twenty-five. Apartment is service. It is, the vendor is Poland Implement Incorporated. Uh, the description is one Alamo, Alamo Machete, twenty-two boom mower, to be mounted on the John Deere six M one-one-five. Dollar amount is eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and two dollars and twenty cents.
Second. Questions, discussion? We get more money from the name. Rooko?
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable dated zero seven, zero two, twenty twenty-five. The official check number twenty-nine, dash, two zero, two five, and three zero, dash, two zero, two five. Fiscal checks three, four, two, seven, three, to three, four, two, nine, five, for a total amount of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventeen cents. I will incorporate this one-page document as presented. Second. Any discussion? Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye. Aye. So next on our agenda is executive session, discuss employee compensation. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, on the executive session with the three trustees and the fiscal officer. Second. Rooko?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Christopher.
Aye. Time is now three fifty-eight, and we are in executive session.
Me too. You're sweet.
Seriously. Time is, uh, four oh four. The three trustees and the fiscal officer have returned from executive session, uh, where no, uh, decisions were made. We had, uh, gone last meeting, talking about, uh, some ideas for compensation, stuff like that. Mr. Christopher, was it honest with what you were thinking?
Yes, uh, I'd like to introduce resolution number zero seven, zero two two, zero two five, dash zero two two. Resolution to increase pay rate for part-time office assistants. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number zero seven, zero two two, zero two five, dash zero two two, to increase the hourly rate for both part-time office assistants effective July second, day two thousand twenty-five. The new hourly rate shall be twenty-three dollars and fifty cents per hour. Physical chargeless is being made in recognition of the, of the assistance continued dedication.
Second that. Any discussion?
Any, any discussion?
I just, uh, I would second, uh, the whole concept of their work they're doing. Appreciation of that, and, um, thank you for.
Thank you for my support, Jim.
Yes. You've been a great job, uh, even with, uh, him not being here, but we saw how many, we said we were able to crunch out this under. So, uh, just trying to dig out from the pile, so. And that being said, we're not giving up on, um, extra staff, so.
Oh, no.
I'm just saying. Just keep that on.
It's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Mr. Brownson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
So, next, so next on the list is the tax budget. So, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number zero seven, zero two, two zero, two five, dash zero two three, to adopt the twenty twenty-six Manana Township tax budget as set forth in the twenty-four page document attached to this resolution incorporated therein. And to direct that resolution and tax budget to be extended to the fiscal officer, to file with the county of our office.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brownson?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher?
Aye.
Alright, next on the agenda is Department head comments. Chief?
Roll call.
Elaine?
Um, just one thing. I got a call today from Marstolz, it's, um, and they'd like to have a grand opening. They've been there six months, but she wants to get something together. It's a Saturday, July nineteenth. Um, she'd like the trustees if they could make it.
Oh, it's a Saturday?
It's Saturday. She thinks more people will all.
Yeah, I mean, middle of the day, I work very tough.
Yeah, come to it, um.
I'll take care of some of this.
I've made calls to, um, Sarah at the Gazette for her, um, she does not work on Saturdays, but she is going to do a preview story in the Gazette, like, you know, that, uh, there's semi grand opening on the nineteenth. Um, I asked the owner what time, and she said twelve-ish, but I can let you guys know more in depth than, as to the time and stuff. But that's, that was on Sunday.
I suppose Sarah would be okay if we were to, if she's not gonna be there and they don't have anyone, we could take a few pictures and provide that to her. She's usually pretty good about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, well, she's gonna do the whole thing of the Gazette, like, a preview story, pictures and stuff, but, and I told the owner to bring, uh, women and sisters.
Sure, just, yeah, we're twenty-two.
Yeah.
So, maybe just, cause I'll let you know what your schedule's like for that Saturday. That's it?
Thank you.
Danny?
Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for the tractor, for my purchase of tractor. Uh, thank you. Second, I would like to let you know that common burial equipment put into the cemetery. And, I'm gonna work on getting probably a concrete pad for it, and some bullets on that, so, it'll all tie in with my, like. And also, I'd like to talk to a newspaper about probably putting that in the newspaper also, what people don't have. Take some pictures, and I have.
Makes good sense. Is that, is that a typical center thing, or is that some other?
Yeah, Sarah, I did see Sarah at an underground one time.
Okay.
Before I get it, too, so, I was, uh, making articles.
And as far as, uh, the rates, I see you've been doing some homework, what other people do.
Yeah.
That's something.
Yeah, they're talking, they're talking, uh, probably.
Yeah.
Yep, they're talking, I think.
Uh, good segue, good business. Uh, common burial rates and fees discussion. And I like York. Uh, you got one, sir?
Okay, so, can I say, Danny did a good job of some homework and, um, you know, I could, I, he, this is stuff that we have to look at. But Montville, uh, apparently has a fee of nine fifty for residents, twenty-three hundred for non-residents. Uh, each box or niche has up to two cremations can be put inside. Opening and closing costs are a hundred, and a graving is two hundred. So it's, it's a pretty well-rounded package for people. Um, Happley is a little less expensive, um, similar open and shut. Sharon Township is likewise less expensive. Uh, Happley was four hundred, Sharon was three hundred. Um, one thing too, I was wondering is like, how big are they, like, compared to ours, you know, I mean, like.
Generally, it's all twelve by twelve, always, always being more than a thousand.
Yeah, I just wanted to ensure, like, Happley had a, a huge one, so that it's possibly less, you know.
Well, they put a lot more money into it, too. A lot of these places, like Montville, what they do is, they provide it all holes up, and that's how they came up with the nine fifty to pay for it.
Yeah. So you'll do that math for us?
I do not do math, but it's a technical thing, plus, so I can do grant on the table.
That's the plus.
That's okay.
It's a good, good start to the conversation, to see what other people are doing. York is somewhere in the twelve hundred dollars for their niche, so, uh, for residents, twenty-five hundred for non-residents. So it's, it's, it's great information to start with, and I appreciate that. Yeah, that's common. Policy review, I think.
Next up, number three here is the policy review update.
So I've been talking to Mike Lyons, and I've been talking about the, uh, which we would attack or look at first. Meetings and procedures, it looks like the first one we're going to work with and through. We've got no recommendations at this point, but that's what he and I are hoping to go through between now and our next meeting regularly. And, um, hopefully, if we get something, we'll get it to you before the meeting, so we can have a better conversation.
Alright. Yep. Alright, next on the list, number four.
Yep. Yep, so, if somebody dumb-bell wants to buy one, or like, sell it, or we'll talk about it in that meeting, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can kinda, so. I think we and Doug should look at these numbers and kinda come up with something. I would consider it that we got it for free. I would take it what it adds.
I would say five, six hundred dollars, whatever.
Yeah, I would definitely, I wouldn't wanna be on the high side, but I don't wanna be on the low side either, and I don't wanna lose money.
If it's okay in between now and then, I would, I would let them know we're still working on it. I'd like to have that chance to go over.
Yeah.
Things and see, see where you're at. Cause you've got some more work you're gonna do around it. I'm sure that it's gonna be some landscaping concepts, cause that's kinda what goes along with those things. And then maybe we can bring that back at the next meeting. Do you, are you have people trumping it a bit, or you just haven't want to be prepared?
They're dying to go, they're dying to get in, right? Alright. So, now, next on my agenda is public comment. I would make a motion to the floor for public comment.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Brownson?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the floor is now open for public comment. If you'd like to want to comment, please raise your hand, uh, state your name, address, and please get your box of hands to me. That's, I don't like to be so nice.
Back row, the members of the board give up a minute, you have my two minutes, if, uh, you can tell anybody in this, uh, meeting why anybody should vote for next one, whether they're Canadian or not.
Yes. And down there. Uh, what's?
Um, are you gonna make the tax budget accessible for the public to view?
Yeah, it is. So, once it's submitted by the board, it's, uh.
Well, the trustees usually. Or mind their line, so, you did it this year. Do you know what the totals are? Are you gonna release that record?
Of course.
In a timely fashion?
Of course.
Okay, great, thank you.
And anybody else? Alright, I'd like to make a motion for this public comment.
Second.
Alright, next on the list is trustee comments.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood, please.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up. In the past, we've talked about the, uh, some of the positions that were open, and the zoning commission had a alternate spot available. And we were happy to have two very good candidates, and last meeting, there was a chance there were gonna be two openings, but that hasn't ended up the situation yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to fill the one spot. And I would, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jim Conne, uh, of Nipples Road to fill the open position for the zone.
Second that.
Which position are you referring to?
There's one that was vacated because she went out of the community.
So, that's, that's a mouth, that's what you're going for?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I need to hear the name of.
Okay, no, I, I did say alternate, but that's okay. I just clarified. So I, it's just discussion, he's a third-generation Manana Township family. Uh, he's been, he's expressed interest in the past, and specifically in the zoning world. So I think that he has interests, he has done to some meetings, so, I think he'll, I expect him to do a good job.
Alright, and then again, he's been on board for a while, so, um, to approve this, I would like to have you or, or later, somebody like, contact him today or tomorrow. And I don't want this to sit, assume that somebody else is gonna contact him, cause that has happened before.
Believe him, come.
Alright, so, make a, roll call.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Mr. Brownson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, so, so, we recently had, and we shared before, there was a meeting for the two seventy-one, seventy-one interchange and other Manana Township or County conversations about, um, traffic safety. And so there was a, there was a, um, meeting over at Highland High School in the gym, and, um, they came and they presented, and they gave us, um, drawings of what the items would look like, and Bruce has those, we'll leave them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll lay them out on the desk, if you wanna take pictures of them, can't take these, but if you wanna take pictures so you, like, you can see what it is, uh, they'll be there.
And if, if you want some, let me know, just, you know, call me, email me, I think we can make copies or give them for you, okay? Those are of all the options, they're not doing them all, but they're all the options in the, in the presentation, and it was more of an open house. Seventy-one, two seventy-one is a no build, they're still not looking to do anything with that, like, that was the big focus to start with. They are shifting their focus to Ledge and Ninety-Fort, that is gonna be around about it, that's their first priority of the projects. They also have, and you can see in that picture, a third turning lane for Route Three in Ramsey, which is something that, you know, Benny was hoping he had that set up for the last.
Two minutes, Eric.
Okay, and bottom line is, it was generally, he'll have those pictures available, and if you wanna see more, let me know, and I can get that for you. That's. Chris?
Um, I, uh, on June twentieth, I was at, I'm going to, collaborating for, uh, Community Roundtable. Um, and this was held at Don Creek Parkway. And this, what it was, was a lot of the, uh, groups here in Manana County, and some of, uh, are live inspired, Manana County Senior Adult Foundation, Buckeye, uh, Community Theater, um, Community Action, Wayne and Manana, Free Clinic, Manana Catholic Charities, Hope and Healing, Feeding Manana, Manana County Board, uh, Development Disabilities, uh, the Society of Project Learn, Cubs Cafe, I am boundless. So they all had up, and they were given five minutes, and it was very impressive, because the first one that got up, started making presentations, she had reams of papers she was gonna read, and in five minutes, they said, Barbara says you're done, and that was the end of it. Everybody else then adhered to the five minutes. So they all told, uh, similar stories, what they do, a lot of them were overlapping, and that was one of the suggestions that were made, that they're all, none of them are doing the same thing, and so you're dividing it up, is there a way to become more efficient by combining some of these things? And so, you're dividing it up, is there a way to become more efficient by combining some of these things? I don't know if they necessarily like that, because, um, you're gonna need less overhead. But, um, some of them said, well, we just need more federal money. And I said, there's not gonna be more federal money. And some of them really wanted to talk with me after that, about why I was saying that, and some are not real happy with it. Some were happy that I even said it, so it was a mixed bag, but it was, it was very good. And then they're all trying to do great things for the county, so that's, that's all I think.
Uh, so, the last thing we were discussing, uh, looking at replacing Sherry Manziel. Um, so, uh, we started a process of looking for some new candidates to help out with the department. And, uh, things are going very well with that. And, uh, I'd be hoping and happy to report that we'll be hiring a new officer here shortly, uh, if everything goes around. We've got a lot of people who are interested, um, more so than I thought there would be. And, um, so, we're, we're gonna work on that and hopefully, you know, you know, want to be a part, go through the process and do all the bigger work in the second round, if anything else. And, uh, finish up on another, um, interview evening greet and, uh, like, resign the officer.
So.
And this'll just really be replacing Sherry in essence.
Yeah, basically.
I mean, it's not a sergeant, but what?
Sergeant Manziel was our highest paid regular patrol officer.
Right.
So, it's gonna be nice that we're gonna be able to replace that position with, uh, with a patrolman.
With a patrol.
You know, we'll be making less money, so that's a good thing. And then also, we will be looking at, uh, promoting from inside to, uh, from our next, uh, starting point, uh, that is getting finalized. Um, otherwise, um, you know, Nick Dominguez said, why elect you two? Wondering the same thing. But, uh, I would tell you the truth, uh, Mr. Eastwood here, I have, just, we try to help out everyone, you know? Um, we got, uh, a text from a resident during the storm and he had a whole entire tree branch and all this large junk fall in his backyard. And he's like, hey, does the township clean up the trees, you know, in our backyards and stuff? I said, well, I really wish they did, but he didn't just go and say, no, you know, go clean it up yourself. He's like, you know what, I will go check on you and I will see how I can help you. And that is a stand-up person there. So, he goes out of his way on everything, uh, even when things are going wrong or we need to do something, he'll offer to pay things out of his own pocket. He does countless hours here at the township, trying to fix things and look at things and try to learn things and talk with people. Uh, he deals with excessive amount of public records requests and tries to cover those, to dictate who needs to answer certain questions, so we get those down. So, Mr. Eastwood, I would vote for you in a heartbeat. Mr. Christopher, you're involved with the VFW, you do, uh, the fan, you do, um, you just had that, uh, community roundtable. Do all the Manana County Trustees Association meetings. You visit every department head, you even go and visit the chief of, uh, fire department and stuff like that. So, you really make sure that you know what's going on in this department. And I would vote for you in a heartbeat, so. If you want the answer to that question, I think, uh, that ties it up in a nutshell. You guys do countless hours of community service. Uh, you guys are both out there during the tosser trashing from the minute it starts and the minute it ended. That's not an easy day for somebody. And, um, um, I really appreciate you guys working so hard on this board to make my job easier. Anything else in front of the board? All right. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting. Time is now four twenty-four. I call the meeting. Oh, roll call.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Christopher.
I do it, aye?
Mr. Christopher.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
There. I like this gavel. I think the, I think Dana was not letting that one at home. I actually think they had things on the ends.